It's a problem that somebody said. He was a soldier.
But then I started talking to him.
He would always want to get to do his wicked duty.
But then I was so smart. You know what I'm saying? When I invite men below, like.
That happened.
Oh, yeah.
Here's my.
Yeah.
We were seven.
I wish, I wish you had. I never had anybody coming to get credit. I've heard of that.
Yes, we need that shooting.
The one.
Did you on earth? Did you shoot in that? No.
No.
No shot for.
Really? I just, that's where I was. Would you?
Well, I'm trying.
More about.
They had come for extra meetings. It was a very, it was very lost taking. Whether it's.
He went.
He said, he said one name. Most usually.
Well, he's not a very quick.
Do you have some ideas?
That's coming.
Will be for you.
He's in a test that I'm with her last. I assume you weren't going to.
Cause he need.
Well, my.
He was.
He just said, I'm with her.
I have to do this for you.
Yes, we could go to church.
That's a four way.
Okay.
I'll share.
The rest.
I'm not here. He's helping.
That's true.
I'm usually kind of like. There's a.
Yeah.
They call trip game.
He brought bad luck with him.
She asked.
She not get that as well.
Dollar.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not James Ruff going this way.
You got that. They get certain. Oh, you're. Okay. Well, there are some.
Yeah, we have problems.
Yeah. So, what.
I can't even. My Wi-Fi is going down.
I don't have it. Do I have it?
Turn off.
Yep. Thank you. I actually sent you two things just in case.
I'll work with it. I'll get it.
Yeah.
Remember, you're good there.
A spot.
Sorry.
I'm trying one. You need to drink more than.
Pounds.
You're supposed to.
Your first. It's not we need to show them that way. Yeah. For.
Okay.
With the issue. Yeah. How should you sum it up?
I mean, this has been.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I just. But I'm. Perfect. I'm not spotting. Yeah.
That this one's. Don't forget that.
It's. 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 I've been a big year plus and TSU.
Yeah.
But I thought. I thought.
I got a call just like thirty minutes before. And he and the guy, he called himself. He's in ETSU or something. But then he said, I'm, I'm calling to help you with your lawsuit. Are you involved with the lawsuit? And I just don't know if I would be able to.
I mean, I don't have a lawsuit.
Absolutely. Just like.
And I'm not talking to you to possibly give it all. And I haven't drank any water. I can't. June. I haven't taken a bath.
We, we, we're ready to go. Mike won't be here, so.
All right. Well, good afternoon. Um, and, um, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three work session. Now, this year is flying by. If you'll look at your agenda, um, we have our consent agenda this evening. You have your meeting minutes, your field trip requests, student fees. Student fees are for twenty-three, twenty-four, and we're not, um, requesting any change. Which are remain the same. That's why I put it on the consent agenda. If anyone has any questions about that, um, let me know. Uh, right now, as, but due to no fee, no change in that recommended fee, I felt like it was, uh, the approval, that I would have your approval for consent agenda there. The last thing there is the TCAT agreement with Elizabethan. And, um, I'm gonna ask Debbie Madge if she would like to talk a little bit about the TCAT Elizabethan agreement.
Yes, ma'am. So, um, we're in an agreement with them for three of our programs. Cosmetology, so cosmetology, three students for next year. Once they complete cosmetology three, they will also earn a hundred and twenty hours credit, um, toward TCAT. And the good thing about the dual enrollment with them is, once they do dual enrollment, they're considered a TCAT student. So, instead of being on a waiting list for three or four years, like they have been, they'll get moved up because they are officially a, a TCAT students, a student. Um, criminal justice, Mr. Benshaw will be, um, doing that with his criminal justice two class. And he has also been tasked with creating the, um, exam, the final exam for the whole TCAT program in Elizabethan. So, the students will have to take the exam, pass the exam, and then, of course, they get the credit. And then we have our last agreement with them is events manu- manufacturing STEM. And all of these are at Sullivan East. Um, it's our, uh, first three programs that we have over there. And STEM is with, uh, Lucas Carr. And he does the Fisto NC three, um, intro to Mechatronics certification. He does PMI Precision Measurement Instrument Certification. Um, and he also does the multi- multimeter digital certification. So, his students get all three of those, um, and they also get, uh, ninety hours toward their, um, program at TCAT.
Just curious, the, the hundred and twenty hours, how close does that get on to completion? Is that halfway or is that further? I have no idea. Or if that's, not something you know that's fine. I just curious.
Um.
You said a hundred and twenty hours. That sounds a lot.
Oh, no. It's, so, they're the only secondary that do, um, you know, the credit hours. And, um, it's usually twelve hundred and ninety-six credit hours to complete an entire program. Um, however, if they continue to do dual enrollment, um, you know, in their next level in the CTE programs, they will get additional hours. Um, but it's, it's just a jump start for them if they wanna go on to TCAT. And we hope to do these dual enrollment at Westridge too, especially with cosmetology and criminal justice. Any other questions? About that or anything on the consent agenda? Uh, one thing I would like to add there is, um, the TCAT dual enrollment is technical dual enrollment. So, the students can get the dual enrollment grant for those twelve hundred and ninety-six hours. In addition, they can also get the academic dual enrollment grant through Northeast State, um, as well. So, the TCAT does across out the Northeast State dual enrollment grant.
I think one of the most, um, advantage advantageous things about this is what she mentioned earlier, is they don't go on that waiting list to get admitted to TCAT and Elizabethan. And that's a big, it's a big thing because a lot of things can happen during the time that you're sitting on a waiting list to get admitted or get into the program. Change your mind, um, you decide you'd get a job, and you don't ever do this. So, I, I think that's the biggest advantage to this program with all the other things that's happening, but you're automatically enrolled. You don't have to wait on a waiting list to get in. And we, they have, as she said, they have waiting lists for three and four years to get into TCAT. It's a big thing.
I'd just like to say thank you, Debbie. These kinds of things don't just happen. It takes a heck of a whole lot of footwork, uh, to get things like this going. So, I appreciate you. Thank you so much for all of it.
Can I ask something about a, a one that's not on here though? Um, the Northeast State Aircraft Mechanic, Richard Bloodons, has got that going on. You guys have been talking with him about that. Is that proceeding along or are we getting close to where we're gonna have that started in our space or how's probably looking?
So, Dr. Palmer and I actually went, uh, to visit a couple of weeks ago. Uh, Mr. Bloodon does a, uh, an open house every Thursday night. So, we went out there and it's, it's open to anyone, students, anyone in the community, education people. So, we went out there and, and we talked with him about it. And, uh, we have the Aviation Pilot Program. So, what we're looking at doing there with, um, the A and P, um, Airframe Power Plant, is, um, getting those students their core requirements first and then just sending them on to, uh, Richard Bloodons for, you know, the rest of their certification.
Cause if we're able to do that same thing to get them in the line, because they're a two-year waiting list, so if we're able to get that going, that would help a lot.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what we're working on next. Hopefully, hopefully, we'll get that going.
We do have something in Bell. You mentioned that.
Uh, yeah, we just did a tour of Bell. Uh, Mr. Carter, myself, and Dr. Palmer's been on the tour as well. But, uh, we toured, um, Bell and they had workforce development, someone from Lagram Workforce Development there because, um, they're gonna accept three of our students, um, come fall. So, hopefully, we'll place two students in machine tool. So, one from Westridge, one from Sullivan East. And then they have a, another WBL, Work-Based Learning Experience, open in logistics. So, we're trying to figure out how that best works with the programs that we offer. We're looking at an aviation student because that student would be, um, you know, pulling parts, inventory in the parts department as far as the helicopters, um, and doing inventory and, you know, checking on parts that go out and the orders and things like that. So, we're looking at an aviation student that is actually interested in the A and P side of it.
Several interests. So, I think that's gonna fly. Excuse the.
And that will, that will be a paid or based learning experience. They will, those students will be paid.
I'm sure a lot of you have already heard, but that, that Richard Bloodons, that program he put together over there, he actually, his first cadre that got actually through the process, they were all offered jobs, the highest paid job. This is a nineteen-year-old kid, straight out of school, hundred thousand dollars a year. So, it was, it's amazing, hundred percent offers of jobs.
Our biggest challenge so far with our aviation program has been our instructor. We've had some turnover there. We have actually a new person that started yesterday. Uh, Dr. Palmer has just continued to pitch in and teach that class. Um, I look forward to when we get that position stabilized and have that person who's invested, invested in that program. Um, and at that point, I think we really do see into that program at Northeast State. Uh, I think this board will see moving forward even more, um, agreements, contractual agreements, partnerships with, um, lots of different agencies. You know, we've got TCAT, Elizabethan, we've got Walter State, uh, we have Northeast State, ETSU. Uh, we have several already in place where we're working through, uh, lots of work-based learning agreements. Um, I don't know that I know of a time when we've had so many opportunities for our students to go into, uh, these type of opportunities where they're gonna get invaluable experience, uh, not only to possibly, uh, career, uh, entrance, but, um, you know, experience to help them make a decision as to, you know, what direction they do wanna go. So, um, lots of success. We have work-based learning with Eastman as well. Uh, so, um, lots of good things happening in those arenas right now. Any other questions about our consent agenda before I move forward? All right. Um, public comment, uh, number five, communications to the board. Um, my communications this evening will be, we're, we're getting heavy. Uh, we have been and we continue to be heavy in the budget process. We're still awaiting some very important, uh, revenue figures. Uh, we can, we can sit and work on a budget all day long and spend money, but until we know how much we have to spend, it makes it, um, a little challenging. So, we're still working on that. Um, we are into our school meetings. Normally have those a little earlier, but we, uh, put those off because I did want Mr. Carter to be able to, um, observe and participate in those meetings. And as of this afternoon, we've had nine. Uh, so, uh, principals are doing a great job. They come in very well prepared. Um, when we have this, uh, budget meeting, we talk about several things. We start our budget meeting by talking about their operational, um, expenses. You know, what's, what's the electrical cost in the building? How much are we spending on custodial supplies? Um, you know, we talk about, um, we ask the question, what's the square footage of the building? Um, we talk about several different things there and it's a good conversation. It's good for all of us and sometimes we pick up on things, little nuggets we need to discuss further. Why has our, and we've got comparative figures. We've got three years of data there for them to, you know, for all of us to look at and review. Uh, from operational, we go into, uh, school nutrition and do the same thing in our school nutrition. We talk about, uh, personnel in both areas. Again, you know, the number of meals being served, breakfast, um, you know, are we going up? Are we going down? Um, we review our personnel. We look for any errors, uh, that we might have to make sure that we've got everything correct. Um, we talk about their, uh, finances, their activity funds, uh, their general purpose budget, review those items. And then we talk about staffing for next year, um, looking at enrollment figures and those kinds of things. I think it's an hour is generally how long that meeting lasts with each one. Our high school meetings will last longer. Uh, they're at the end of the week. Uh, but we have, um, we have one more elementary and then our three middles tomorrow. So, I feel like we're in pretty good shape moving forward with that information, but, um, I think they're very informative meetings. We give the principal an opportunity to give us feedback about needs. Sometimes we get more than needs, we get wants, and that's okay. But I think they're good meetings. We even, we talk about the testing. We talk about curriculum. Um, so, um, those are well underway. I'd ask, Mr. Carter, do you have anything you'd add to that?
I just really appreciate the thoroughness of meetings and how well-prepared the administrators are when they, you know, tend. They're, they're very, uh, upfront and very willing to share what their needs and wants are. So, it's been really a good opportunity for me to just hear about the abilities and areas of concern.
And we, we have, we do a little bit of a review on, um, upcoming projects. You all know we've got a lot of projects on the table right now with roofs and different things going on, so an opportunity to talk to the principal about that and preparation for those projects moving forward. Um, so, we're, we're really blessed with some very talented personnel in those positions.
We're gonna give a update on roofs that we're doing now. It's not.
Uh, we can do that in just a minute. Sure will. Um, additionally, what I, uh, what I have there is, uh, starting next week, we will start our state testing. That's all over the state of Tennessee, uh, TCAT and EOCs. And that will go through the end of April. Uh, we will, uh, this, this school year's coming to a very quick end. So, we hit May, we've also got, uh, beyond that, we have AP tests that will be given, um, and, um, lots of honors programs. We have graduation dates coming up. I put that in your update. May twenty-fifth for East High School and May twenty-sixth for West Ridge High School. And tonight we have, um, several student groups will be recognizing, uh, Scope. Uh, those four students and Dr. Palmer attended Scope Conference, um, in March. And, um, Dr. Palmer, would you like to say some things about Scope that we'll, we'll do some during the board meeting?
Sure, sure.
Would you like to go in depth a little bit with?
I can a little bit. I, I did riddle something up just in case you asked.
Just to cut it.
Just in case, just in.
You didn't think I would, huh?
Well, you know, I suspect it. So, um, March sixth, uh, TSB hosted the, uh, two thousand twenty-three Student Congress on Policy and Education. That's what Scope stands for. Um, it's a conference that brings together ninth through twelfth graders. We generally take eleventh graders to the conference. Uh, these students are from across the state and they discuss, uh, current topics in education. Participants explored education issues through mock school board meetings and group discussions. At the end of the day, participants met as a congress where, um, each student's student leader debated on one of the topics for the day. These events were designed to give students an understanding of how school boards operate. Students expressed their opinions by voting on positive statements involving the debate issues. This year Sullivan County students, as Mr. Ralph Fisk noted, uh, were from Sullivan East High School. They were Anthony Torbit and Kylie Collins. And from West Ridge High School was Hope Green and Reed Haas. All four students did excellent job participating and, and just getting involved. We were very, very proud. They represented our school system very well. Two Sullivan County students, Hope Green and Kylie Collins, were elected to be speakers and representatives for the con position on the provided issue. That's the first time this ever happened, that they've been elected, that students of Sullivan County have been elected to be, the, the, the folks on stage arguing the, the provided issue. They actually won the debate by overwhelming majority. Um, and then, uh, finally after the debate was, uh, completed and we were, you know, really pumped up, excited for them, um, they began, uh, the election of delegates for next year, the, the officer representatives for the following year. Uh, they choose from the students who were on stage, who were chosen. So, that's, those are the only folks who are, who are options to become next year's officers as a part of Scope. So, we had two people up there, two of our, uh, young ladies, one, uh, one from West Ridge and one from East. And our own Kylie Collins was elected to be the Scope President for next year, for the whole state. So, so it was really an honor. It was really cool to see what a good job that they did. And she was a shining star when she hit the debate stage. She represented herself pretty well.
What did they debate?
It was really amazing. Um, let's see if I can find. I think I'd have to dig back now, March sixth. That's like forever. I think the issue had to do with.
It's okay if you don't, you can come back.
I don't remember. I'll come back. I'll look it up. I'll look it up, cause I have it in my notes.
Come back later.
But, um, I'll, I'll take it. It was really.
I think those are always interesting.
They are.
Some of the topics that they.
Mm-hmm.
I think one was, and I don't know if it was the one that they debated, but one was student representatives.
Mm-hmm.
On the school board.
Oh, it was. You're exactly right.
Is that it?
I thought that was the one that they debated, but that was one of the issues.
Okay, I know that was one of them.
Another one had to do with intermurals and whether, uh, students should receive credit for after-school intermurals. That was another debate topic.
Right.
They always come up with some really good topics. So, I'll look up which one they debated, but it's always very good, very good.
So, going back to Mr. Jones' question about update on the projects. So, I'm gonna go ahead and do that right now. If you look at, at the screen, uh, I don't have this printed out, but, um, what I'm going to do here, I don't, let me see if I can enlarge this. Uh, that will help some. If we're looking at S R two here, and as we go down through here, this is actually my project cost payout sheet. So, um, what you'll see here is the first thing on here, and this is going to be the complete listing of projects, okay? We've got the East Vocational Roof here. And what you see here is the architectural services, the vendor cost, and the pay. That one's been paid. So, we'll keep moving on. Charlie, you wanna tell us where we are on that?
When, they have awarded, I think.
It has been awarded with the customer.
Right. They're, they're working on the equipment. They have got to know some of this equipment is gonna be delivered.
Okay, so we've actually made one payment there of eleven thousand. So, we know that we're, we're getting movement there. The Central Middle School Track, uh, Baseline Sports, we actually did a change order there in addition to the original bid of two hundred and thirty-five thousand. And that change order was for cracks, existing cracks after they moved, removed the top coat. So, we're just waiting for the, uh, temperature to change.
They have filled the cracks. That has been done.
Yes, that part's been done.
Last week, they worked on the long jump pit. They, the sand pit, they've come in last week and worked on it. So, now you're getting into, we need a ambient temperature to proceed with the other work.
Uh, both greenhouses at Sullivan East and West Ridge have both been installed and working. And, Dr. Ralph, you wanna give an update on the, uh, greenhouse at East?
I sure can. Uh, went there a couple of weeks ago, uh, to purchase some flowers and I'd driven around, but I hadn't been inside. It's bigger than the original one. Um, it's very nice. Um, plants were beautiful. Um, I know that, uh, Mr. Smith at East was very proud, um, showed me all the, all the little, uh, ins and outs, uh, of the building, but it looks great. It's a, it's a great addition to the campus.
We also have the East High Tennis Courts that has been awarded to Baseline. Uh, that again is one of those projects that won't get started until we have consistent temperatures. But both of those projects, the Central Middle Track and the Tennis Courts have, uh, fit completion dates by June thirtieth. So, we know that, that will be finished prior to the June thirtieth deadline. Miller Perry Roof, that, um, project has been awarded to Harker Road Roofing with a hundred and twenty-day deadline, five hundred and eighty-three thousand. Left City Roof has been awarded to ATD for two hundred and sixty thousand. The Emmett Roof has not, the bid on that hasn't come in yet unless I'm missing something there. Charlie, am I still good? The Ketrin Re Roof Project has been, um, awarded to Morristown. I've got, got that misspelled in my spreadsheet. I'll fix that. Hundred and fourteen thousand, nine, ten. The Central Middle School HVAC, I have part of that in S R two for the architectural fees. The actual project is down in S R three. We'll see that in just a minute.
Emmett, Emmett has been awarded to Morristown Roofing, okay? I've got that letter in ten.
I've got the, uh, cost down there, so that is, that is true.
Yeah. Morristown.
We do a little bit of a review on upcoming projects. You all know we've got a lot of projects on the table right now with roofs and different things going on, so an opportunity to talk to the principal about that and preparation for those projects moving forward. So, we're really blessed with some very talented personnel in those positions.
Can you give us an update on the roofs that we're doing now?
We can do that in just a minute, sure will. Additionally, what I have there is, starting next week, we will start our state testing, that's all over the state of Tennessee, TCAP and EOCs, and that will go through the end of April. We will, this school year's coming to a very quick end, so we hit May, we've also got, beyond that, we have AP tests that will be given, and lots of honors programs. We have graduation dates coming up, I put that in your update, May 25th for East High School and May 26th for West Ridge High School. And tonight, we have several student groups will be recognizing Scope. Those four students and Dr. Palmer attended Scope Conference in March. And, Dr. Palmer, would you like to say some things about Scope that, we'll do some during the board meeting, but would you like to go in depth a little bit with the-
I can a little bit, I did riddle something up, just in case you ask.
Just to cut it from the-
Just in case.
You didn't think I would, huh?
Well, you know, I suspect it, so. March 6th, TSBA hosted the 2023 Student Congress on Policy and Education, that's what Scope stands for. It's a conference that brings together ninth through 12th graders, we generally take 11th graders to the conference. These students are from across the state and they discuss current topics in education. Participants explored education issues through mock school board meetings and group discussions. At the end of the day, participants met as a congress where each student's student leader debated on one of the topics for the day. These events were designed to give students an understanding of how school boards operate. Students expressed their opinions by voting on positive statements involving the debate issues. This year Sullivan County students, as Ms. Ralph Fisk noted, were from Sullivan East High School, they were Anthony Torbit and Kylie Collins, and from West Ridge High School was Hope Green and Reed Haas. All four students did excellent job participating and just getting involved, we were very, very proud, they represented our school system very well. Two Sullivan County students, Hope Green and Kylie Collins, were elected to be speakers and representatives for the con position on the provided issue, that's the first time this has ever happened, that they've been elected, that students of Sullivan County have been elected to be the folks onstage arguing the provided issue. They actually won the debate by overwhelming majority. And then finally, after the debate was completed and we were really pumped up, excited for them, they began the election of delegates for next year, the officer representatives for the following year. They choose from the students who were onstage, who were chosen, so that's, those are the only folks who are options to become next year's officers as a part of Scope. So we had two people up there, two of our young ladies, one from West Ridge and one from East. And our own Kylie Collins was elected to be the Scope President for next year, for the whole state. So, so it was really an honor, it was really cool to see what a good job that they did. And she was a shining star when she hit the debate stage, she represented herself pretty well.
What did they debate?
Um, let's see, if I can find, I think, I'd have to dig back now, March 6th, that's like forever, but I don't know. I think the issue had to do with-
It's okay, you can come back later.
I don't remember, I'll come back, I'll look it up, I'll look it up, because I have it in my notes.
Come back later.
But, I'll take it.
I think those are always interesting, some of the topics that they-
They are.
I think one was, and I don't know if it was the one that they debated, but one was student representatives on the school board.
Oh, it was, you're exactly right.
Is that it?
I thought that was the one that they debated, but that was one of the issues.
Okay, I know that was one of them.
Another one had to do with intermurals and whether students should receive credit for after-schooled intermurals, that was another debate topic. They always come up with some really good topics, so I'll look up which one they debated, but it's always very good, very good.
So, going back to Mr. Jones' question about update on the projects, so I'm going to go ahead and do that right now. If you look at the screen, I don't have this printed out, but what I'm going to do here, I don't, let's see if I can enlarge this, that will help some. If we're looking at S R 2 here, and as we go down through here, this is actually my project cost payout sheet, so what you'll see here is the first thing on here, and this is going to be the complete listing of projects, okay? We've got the East Vocational Roof here, and what you see here is the architectural services, the vendor cost, and the pay, that one's been paid. So we'll keep moving on, we've got the Indian Springs Rooftop Units over the cafeteria. Charlie, you want to tell us where we are on that?
They have awarded, I think.
It has been awarded, yes, the customer, head of the head.
Right, they're working on the equipment, they have got to know some of when this equipment is going to be delivered.
Okay, so we've actually made one payment there of 11,000, so we know that we're getting movement there. The Central Middle School Track, Baseline Sports, we actually did a change order there in addition to the original bid of 235,000, and that change order was for cracks, existing cracks after they removed the top coat. So, we're just waiting for the temperature to change.
They have filled the cracks, that has been done.
Yes, that part's been done.
Last week, they worked on the long jump pit, the sand pit, they come in last week and worked on it, so now you're getting into, we need an ambient temperature to proceed with the other work.
Both greenhouses at Sullivan East and West Ridge have both been installed and working, and Dr. Ralph, you want to give an update on the greenhouse at East?
I sure can. Went there a couple of weeks ago to purchase some flowers, and I'd driven around, but I hadn't been inside. It's bigger than the original one, it's very nice, plants were beautiful. I know that Mr. Smith at East was very proud, showed me all the old little ins and outs of the building, but it looks great, it's a great addition to the campus.
We also have the East High Tennis Courts that has been awarded to Baseline. That, again, is one of those projects that won't get started until we have consistent temperatures, but both of those projects, the Central Middle Track and the Tennis Courts, have completion dates by June 30th, so we know that that will be finished prior to the June 30th deadline. Miller Perry Roof, that project has been awarded to Harker Road Roofing with a 120-day deadline, 583,000. Bluff City Roof has been awarded to A T D for 260,000. The Emmett Roof has not, the bid on that hasn't come in yet, unless I'm missing something there. Charlie, am I still good? The Ketrin Re Roof Project has been awarded to Morristown, I got that misspelled in my spreadsheet, I have to fix that, 114,910. The Central Middle School HVAC, I have part of that in S R 2 for the architectural fees, the actual project is down in S R 3, we'll see that in just a minute.
Emmett has been awarded to Morristown Roofing, okay? I've got that letter in ten.
I've got the cost down there, so that is true.
Yeah, Morristown Roofing.
I just didn't have the vendor, thank you. Might as well fix it for them there. Mary Hughes Re Roof, A T D Restoration, that includes the fascia, $383,000.
We end up with asphalt or tin on Mary Hughes?
We ended up with asphalt shingles. Have you, have you chosen those shingles, have you looked at samples or anything from that?
No, I haven't, they haven't sent many samples yet, I told them, it will be a slate gray to a charcoal black architectural shingle.
Is that historic, are they really a part of that, because I know they're really concerned with that.
Yes, I've been in contact with them, I'm part of them.
They're very happy with everything that's going on, I got an update a week to go. The next set of items you'll see here, Holson Carpet was finished last summer, School Nutrition, E-Raid, we gave the employees a bonus, cost for nurses, summer camp, and the gravel that we laid down to fit the greenhouse on at West Ridge. We do have the boardroom audio that Eric went over with you all on this in S R 2, and we're still, we're very close to making our purchase in math textbooks. The Indian Springs Re Roof, that was awarded to Escola, 120 days, 117,000. We're still working on the East High Science Labs, had a little bit of a setback there, we were hoping to piggyback on the UT contract, state contract they had, and CTS has come back and said we can't piggyback on a university contract, it has to be a public school, so we're working on that. And we did have some architectural fees for a multipurpose center that is still on hold, the bid on that came in way too high. Getting down into S R 3, we still are awaiting a bid to come in on the Indian Springs HVAC. Here is where the Central Middle HVAC is, the board approved us moving that to S R 3 because of the cost, $7 million. Mary Hughes HVAC, that opens-
That certainly opens tomorrow.
I thought it was, but I didn't, it's tomorrow, I believe, at 2:00. So we'll have some more information on that one tomorrow. The Sullivan Heights Chiller, Norwell got that contract, a 690-day project completion there of 984,000. We're still waiting on the Bluff City Cooling Tower to be delivered, we're hoping in the next week, Charlie, I've got it.
I swear, I got from the contractor that, this was about a month ago, that there's date of move-in mobilization was going to be next Monday, if they see that their cooling tower is on shipment, that it's scheduled to be delivered, so it's close, hopefully.
You can see there, that's 334,006. Sullivan Heights Rooftop Units, American Mechanical, 430 days on that project completion, That one has been awarded. The Bluff City HVAC has not been awarded, we don't have those bid openings yet.
I think it's Thursday.
Is it tomorrow?
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I've got Mary Hughes tomorrow, Indian Springs, it looks like Thursday, I don't have Bluff City 30 on my calendar.
What's the state review there? Do you have line item for state review, what does that mean?
On the Bluff City HVAC-
It requires electrical changes, you have to go to the state fire, state electrical fire marshal for state review.
That we had to do, that we didn't have to do on the other projects. We still have Rock Springs HVAC and Miller Perry HVAC, those architectural services as well as being put out to bid are still in the works with Thompson Litten Architects. And then, if you all will recall, at the first of the year, we had those facility assessments for East, Mary Hughes, and Indian Springs, and that's where we are on the projects right now.
Great, thank you.
So, lots and lots of projects, I don't know, I'm concerned about the Miller Perry HVAC, the Bluff, the Bluff City HVAC is going to be a smaller project, I think we'll be okay there, but the other one is the Mary Hughes HVAC, Miller Perry and Mary Hughes HVAC, because those are both large projects, but anytime we talk about Mary Hughes, we know that we've got challenges there because we're looking at a building that was built in 1929, I believe, 1929 or 1920?
Part of it was, but then it was reburnished and then it was built back in 48, I think, is the last guy to go back.
Okay, I think 20 or 29 is the initial building, so.
Charlie, what type of permits do we have to pull from the county when we do these projects?
We don't have to pull any.
Architect, that's.
Architect, but-
What type do they have to pull? Electrical or?
They do have to have an electrical inspector when they change the switchgear out, stuff like that. We'll have to have an electrical upgrade, and of course, it's involving BTS at Central, I know I got an email from the, and actually a call from the hosting engineering on that one the other day, about a new, it's quite the rate of transformer and the switchgear, a lot of it falls back like it. Indian Springs, the subcontractor, who has been doing the electrical, it's up to them to pull the permits and stuff like that.
They have to pull the building permit also, when they did the greenhouse, they said they have to pull a building permit.
Anything on public property, we don't have to have them inspected like a building inspector does, Sullivan County.
But, if we're erecting a structure on our campus, we have to have an architect involved and those kinds of things, so there, even though we've not got a building, it does require-
Non-missile planes, that's the national requirement.
For state inspection.
We have a whole tossy, it says we have to have more of any type of structure.
Yes, sir.
That's important to remember in this proposal.
So, having gone through that, and that's a lengthy list, I know that, this is a spreadsheet I keep, I don't mind updating and sharing that with you all at any time, if you have questions.
Do we have to have Mary Hughes for the technical cost of these back?
Well, we think, Charlie thought between three and four minutes, I actually think it's higher. It'll be interesting to see that one, because I'm not sure, that one's really going to drive what, what else can be done in S R 3, in my opinion.
After the Central bid, everything's here?
Yes, that Central bid was, now, we're also looking at three times the square footage at Central as we're looking at, at Mary Hughes as well, but again, at Mary Hughes, we're looking at three floors.
Basically, yeah.
And the age of the building, so, and no infrastructure. At Central, there's a little bit of infrastructure, I don't know that we're utilizing it, I think we are, to some, some, but we don't have any infrastructure already at Mary Hughes. But we probably, we will get that one tomorrow, if there's, if there are bidders, but we're getting very close and, you know, we would have a great opportunity to get some things done, and if these projects can all be awarded, we will be in pretty good shape, building-wise.
If I can live through it.
Are there any other questions about our projects? I'm glad you asked to see that, I'm happy to share. Just as a preview of how quickly we asked. All right, so we're back on our agenda. Unfinished business, 6A is policy 5.117, this is, I'm asking for adoption on second reading. This is the procedure for granting tenure, we went over this at our last work session, where the removal of all the notebook paperwork that teachers were submitting has come out, and basically what we're looking at is consistently high ratings on evaluations conducted by the principal and/or other evaluation evaluators. And then the one letter from the principal recommending tenure, and then the following guidelines will apply. This, again, is a reflection of the TSBA recommended policy, and I will be recommending approval, adoption tonight on second reading.
See, it's here in the document, that stuff you have to read. And we don't have any policies in first reading, right?
No, sir, this is the only policy on the agenda, we had some other things that I thought would take some time, so, no, I haven't put any policy on here.
Last month, maybe not before, last I asked you to go to the policy on first reading, we don't have any policy on first reading, if it comes to us again, call my hand, I'll be like, I'm going to the parks. Did something happen recently that you think? I don't think so. Other than I remember that to back.
Item 6B is the First Christian Church of Bluff City request about the parking lot. Mr. Jones and I have met with two gentlemen who are representing the church on two different occasions, and I'm going to yield to Mr. Jones here, if you want to recap those meetings and go over that, and I'll fill in anywhere you want me to, Mr. Jones.
We met and discussed basically the 20-year lease that was replaced back in 2014, I believe, 2013, and it's due next year, and we talked about how they were paying the money back then for paying the parking lot, to the police, it really was written as a lease, it was just written as a, we were going to use the parking lot, we were going to pay for that. So we talked with them about doing a 20-year lease, a full parking lot, and asked them to secure bids from different vendors, and I think they ended up getting probably five different bids, it was not a job of the board to choose any bid, so we came up with various prices, $37,000 was the figure of the bidding, but pretty much three and two, if the board freezes for a 20-year period, one-time payment of 37,000, and that would take us 20 years of insurance to be responsible for maintenance and upkeep of the parking lot, responsible for sealing it during the time it has, at least we have to reflect that they would be responsible for that, and our own obligation would be to be able to use that when we needed it, and the opinion for the use of parking lot and actually pay it. We do not have to, we can prepay the bid, we can prepay the lease, that was a question that I had, and Chris Davis has said we can prepay the lease if we approve that. It's actually within range, what we talked about last month, I believe, on the prices, and I'm not sure who they will use, but the lease, if it's approved as we talked about, they would have to pay the parking lot within six months, actually the lease was signed to make sure that it was in good shape, was there some cracks in it now, and we'll put any other legal technology in there that will be needed in a par lease, and we'll try to answer any questions that you may have.
You mentioned something about liability, that's covered in there as far as, since it's just their property being leased, is liability theirs, ours, or shared?
Liability would be theirs, now, could they sue us if somebody got hurt in the parking lot, I guess the answer could be that good, but we're leasing the property from them, and we will ask that question, a payout, we will write that contract up, how so? And they have, we have a key to the church, that was important to make sure, actually they discovered that the old key did not work, so we now have a new key, should there need to be an evacuation office, should we go in the church and use that? Paul, do you have a question?
Yeah, so, so we're going to put in there that they have to pay the parking lot to continue, I didn't think we was wanting to put that in there for last, we not discussed that?
We, we're not paying for the parking lot, we're paying, we're paying for it to be in appropriate condition, we don't want, we don't want to rent a parking lot or lease a parking lot that's not, and they're going to pay it this summer if, is their plan, and we're not paying for parking lot to be paid, but we're paying for use of a parking lot that's in good shape. That was the reason for that, we weren't going to pay them, we weren't going to pay the money for the lease without some assurance that it would be in good safe condition, and they'll have the, they'll have the scrapping in the parking lot done, and I think it also includes painting first, and it's not, the license bids they had, and it should be good for people who park there. That's why we didn't ask them to do those copies of the bids on due send office, what they had, so how much did it cost, we didn't ask for it from the board.
And future maintenance is their responsibility.
And they'll probably, they'd have some estimates on that, and I think every five years, what they're looking at doing for the actual sealing, the best sealing over five years, they'll, they'll have about 50% of the cost, in other words, it's still 37,000, it'd be 74,000 by the time they get through. We talked about doing the yearly lease, paying a yearly fee, they'll have to borrow the money to do that, which would drive the cost up for us, because we don't have to pay them interest on that, so the best bet would be to do a prepaid 20-year lease.
Get labor, they're going to get labor.
We'll make sure that the lease itself covers any liability issue or anything of that nature that lawyers think that we need.
The other part of this is, I don't know where we park if we don't have access to that parking lot, and all of you that are familiar with that area, we utilize the entirety of that side of the church all day long.
And they don't, they don't schedule our funerals, the times that we're using it, things of that nature, they try to make sure that they're doing what we need, and very quickly, we met with two of them one day, and that was just one of them, I stayed after all the different bids in, and it will, this has to be a next year budget, so we're not putting money now, we're asking permission to put it in a next year budget for the 37,000, and they understand that too, that they won't be paid until, until they, they're going to pay it this summer, hopefully, if we approve it, pay it this summer, so that my kids aren't present, it's not being used.
You have any questions? Next item on the agenda is item C, which is the- which is the survey for the property on Henry Carr Road, and this is hot off the I'm going to ask Charlie to walk us through this, we just got it, can I have, Charlie, if you'll walk us through this, if you want to get up there and take us through this, we just got this run as the board meeting was starting, so take us a little bit of-
Mr. Miles, I had made him out there, we bought the property, heard board's request if you want to cross the creek or anything, you do notice there is a spring right here that it'll have to take in, it comes out from under a rock, but here's the actual creek right here, so the closeness to the house, we had to put that spring with it. The original deed, the property line was out in the road, but now according to thing, you have to have a 25- But now according to thing, you have to have a twenty five foot span, so he came twenty five foot back from the center line of the road and established these pins. He is sending this to the soil scientist per se, to make sure both pieces of property will perk, and then that will be sent on to Nashville to TDEC to be approved. He's asked, is there any, if he's gonna, tomorrow he's gonna drive his pins, he hasn't driven yet, he's gonna need to ask the board. Is there any changes you may want made prior to him down the pins tomorrow? There's point nine, acre in each lot, there's point nine two acres in this lot, point nine three, this lot does include the whole house, the garage, and the little storage building in behind it.
Does it leave us any land down below lot one that most of?
A little bit, there was an old fence line went through there, it'd be hard to cross it though, because the creek, this is that road that comes down and that bridge, you know, and then that old barn that's failing is right over in this area. So we can't access and get across the creek. There's not a lot here, but there was just a little bit, but we'd have to get able to get across the creek, you know what I'm saying? But it'd be hard to, it's, it's real rough, there's a lot of reeds, and it's pretty steep, and there's a rock bluff, it'd be kinda hard to access, but there's not enough there to I don't think you'd ever, it's kinda of a swampy, soft dirt area anyway. But we can still access across the creek and get over on this side of the ridge. Okay, 'cause that road is, is right here, and that's that bridge that you cross.
How close is that pin come on lot two, up where they're going to put in the access driveway?
It's not close.
Oh, oh, it's half a quarter of a mile up, or half a mile up the road.
It's several hundred feet, but it's, it's enough so the line of sight won't be a problem.
No, you can't see it.
No, it's probably two hundred and fifty feet.
Longer than that. If we're gonna plumb up to that other, plumb up to up there where we originally looked at putting in the construction entrance, it's quarter of a mile up there, it's a long way up that road, you can't see it. Because it, you know, there's a brick house across the road over here, and it's, it's quite a ways up to there than that. And this is a nice open lot right here, it slopes, it slopes, all it slopes downhill toward the creek, but this is a pretty nice lot.
TDEC kept it approved?
Everything has, ah, well, that's just what was in his email, and that he, he sent to me. I think it said TDEC. The mapping will then go to TDEC for their review, maybe because of the floodplain or something like that, but he had he said, look it over and give me any changes that the board would like to make, if any. I will set the corner lots tomorrow, which is Wednesday. He said, I'm sending this map to the soil scientist for the soils mapping, for the septic system, so the soil scientist will mark where the septic system would have to go in that. And also, he said, then that, that mapping will then go to TDEC for their approval. They probably have to approve before the septic system goes too, 'cause once that's approved, then he will send that on to Nashville.
And it does join the Tatum property, right?
It's right on that fence line, yes.
And Mr. Tatum owns that farm across the street.
I don't know about that.
He's got two, two sections there.
Is that inside the city?
No.
Not yet.
Well, I just wonder, 'cause one of the notes, number eight, it's about so the county had Kingsport subdivision regulations, I'm kinda curious why it was close, it's not inside the city right now.
The city just goes up to Old Lynn Road.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that's why I was, I was, it was interesting, it's a matter.
And at one time, so the city did on Lynn Road, round two, with an interest of western. But this year it doesn't even join Lynn Road.
That's why I say it's kind of an odd note.
I think, since you brought that up, something that had come up, this is just a point of information. Where the gentleman had purchased the property and had it zoned for a city. And was going to put eleven hundred dwellings in there. And that property is now at for sale.
Really? Two point two million, right?
Take a check.
They already done the work though? Or is that a difference?
It's the there's, there's nothing been done. And you have the city annexed? Now he's got it up for sale.
One of Rock Springs Road, they've dropped it, they've killed it on the east, that's different. Yes, different one, it's repaid and part of the driveway, it's a good, it's a good space. But the city is now surveying for the, Philcrest, well, Philcrest, that is what they're calling it, it's from Philcrest and that back street, that narrow street. Topa.
Topa.
But it's two hundred and four acres, it's, it's basically a little bit. I mean, they have a given reason, they just, they just got a lease. Now, if we approve this, selling it, we'll have to look at process of doing it. Whether it's online, if we do it online again, we have to advertise and let people know this for sale, because last time, Rick did, I think he used for it, definitely for sale, so I don't think he's gonna do that.
Is Rick here? Where is Rick?
I'm taking that. I don't know, I don't know about anyone else, but I liked that whole process.
Well, I guess since you don't sleep at four thirty in the morning.
I always hated when somebody'd lose it, a hundred dollars and stuff, but I think the online process, I was really good.
You still lose it though.
Oh yeah, but at least you know, I've been kinda sitting here and opening up all the bids, I'm I definitely like that.
I'd be awed if they had a lot done to get through, they wanted to get them together and sell three at a time, and I'd also that's for three of them.
I really do like it.
I'm sorry, sir.
But do we, do we set it in on, not now, but do we set it in on five, do these, or do we wait until the bids go in and bring it back to board? The board, the board has to approve it, but
I mean, we'd have to get an appraisal, to do that, I imagine, appraisal, at least put like a minimum of seventy five percent, or whatever you do, or even if you put a hundred percent, whatever you do, I don't imagine.
Well, we had a minimum on the student, so if we give what somebody has offered, we've had contacts on this, and the board, I don't think you guys made an offer.
And they said I tell him to proceed tomorrow and pin it, something, to pin with the process.
We don't need to let him.
I think the board, unless the board is not willing to move ahead with the sale, I think we go ahead and pin that property and hit that. I think we've got two opportunities there, one is a lot, which I think is a very nice building lot, it's an acre, those aren't you know, there's no one going to build behind you, you know what's on both sides of you, and across the road, and then you know, if someone is into renovation, that can be a beautiful old farmhouse. It's pretty well stripped on the inside, they didn't leave even the mantle over the fireplace. I think the sink is still in the kitchen, a few things, but to be honest, that's gonna it's, it's pretty rough, it's gonna take a lot of renovation, but it has potential. So.
Before we put it on market, we would have to decide whether we wanted to sell it with any type of restrictions or not, as far as what use, I mean, it's residential definitely, but
It's zoned residential.
But you'd have to decide whether or not you wanted to restrict it to public homes, residential houses, right? Because if we sell it with any restrictions, that might hold the bid prices down.
There's a mobile home there on the corner. And one down the road, so.
Right.
Alright, I'm moving on to item seven, new business. Rock Springs Elementary mascot, Principal Dinsmore will be here this evening to make a presentation there. I had mentioned to you all earlier that somewhere along the line, Rock Springs got a mascot of a guitar, a guitar. And that just wasn't working very well. They wanted to have something that was more relevant, other than a guitar. So, and then there was not only a guitar, there was stars. So there was a lot of confusion, and Ms. Dinsmore approached me and we had a conversation, so we went through a process that mirrored the same process that we went through with our new schools, and our central mill and Sullivan Heights Mill with the naming process, and selecting the mascot and color. And they have moved through that process, and they have the results. And she will go through the process with you all this evening, and present you all with those results. And we will be making a recommendation to the board, and hopefully getting approval for them to have a new mascot and some relevant, relevant colors. The next thing on the agenda is item B, which is the E-Rate contract. This is something that we do annually, where we submit for E-Rate funds. E-Rate funds. The school system ends up paying twenty percent of the cost, the consortium, the E-Rate consortium, and the federal, the federal government ends up reimbursing us at eighty percent. You can see in your board docs, the list that has been submitted, these are devices, this is all has to do with internet connectivity, access points, so on and so forth. So our cost is around at about twenty thousand dollars, not two thousand five hundred and seventy two dollars. But I will be asking for your approval this evening for this E-Rate contract. Does anyone have any questions about that? Alright, the next item on your agenda is item seventy, ELC additional money grant. I'm gonna ask Ms. Buckles if she'll share with you all our wealth. There.
So we were given the opportunity to apply for more funding through the ELC grant. The ELC grant is the grant that we use to do testing, to see if someone has come, it's for our students and for our staff. We were awarded an extra two hundred thousand dollars for that. So our intention is, the majority of that money is to be spent on walkie talkies, so that we have communication if we do get people out of the parking lot being tested. With the goal being that every single staff member on every campus has a walkie talkie.
A new walkie talkie.
Right.
And all the same. This grant opportunity came available because we were one of the original grantees of the ELC grant. And of the ELC grant, and there weren't as many awardees for the grant in the first round as they thought, as many applicants that there'd be, so we, we did really well the first time around, and because of that we got an additional opportunity to apply, and Ms. Buckles has done a great job with those applications, she's done a great job keeping up with our all of our written communication, as far as ESR goes, and the ELC grant, imposing those items, and putting those in E-Plan, and quite frankly, getting those approved for us, so we've done really well. But ladies and gentlemen, and about did you wake up, Rick? Next time tell me, I'll look at you and smile, okay? Could you turn the flash off?
I can't control that, I'm not smart enough.
Well, point it at Paul. I've lost my train of thought now. Seriously, where was I?
We got, we got more money for the reverse.
What I was getting ready to say is what we have experienced over the past few years will soon be gone. And I don't know that we will ever have another time when we have these kinds of monies available for any kind of projects. I commend the board, I think you've done a great job in utilizing this money to extend the life of buildings, roofs, make buildings more comfortable for our students and staff, so but the day is coming where there is none. And we'll be having to look at other means to fund projects as they come up. So just a little bit of a, you know, what, what seems like a wealth of funding right now is not gonna be there forever. Alright. Can I add something to that real quick? Yes. On your agenda, you should have a current update for the ELC budget, and you have the ELC additional grant budget. I need approval on both of those, because we've had to move some money around to spend the original ELC grant budget, so I need you to approve that, so that Doug can get our general ledger ready to go and what should this, what should this agenda item say?
It's fine, what it says, I just need you to approve both that budget update and your grant budget, additional grant budget.
Okay, budget update and additional ELC grant loan. Just as exciting, and even more exciting, is the next item on the agenda, which is item seventy, is the Innovative Schools Model Grants. And I had, I know you all have heard about this, these are state grants that were coming, million dollar grants to our two, each to our two high schools, and half million dollar grants to our middle schools. Debbie and Brent have had a series of meetings, I've been a part of early, in the early meeting stages with our principals of our middle schools and high schools, and pinpointed how this money could be best utilized in our school district. Again, this money is available to our schools over the course of a four, of four years. Now, there is special consideration for construction projects, that you can get this money upfront. So as we went through this, and I'm gonna let Debbie and Brent talk about these projects, and Debbie, if you'll talk about the middle school projects, and Brent, I'll let you talk about the two high school projects, is that okay? And let the board know what the projects are. Tonight, what we're gonna be asking you to approve is, our projects were submitted to the state, thank you Debbie again, for getting those projects submitted, and those have been approved. So we now have the green light from the state to move ahead with our five projects, so Debbie, you wanna talk about the middle school projects first?
So just to give you a little bit of ground on how the grant funds become available from the State Department, despite improvements in high school graduation rates, ACT performance, early post-secondary opportunities, work-based learning, dual enrollment. Less than thirty percent of high school students are completing a post-secondary credential within six years of graduation. And the huge gap there is from K through twelve to post-secondary. So we've, we've got a gap from high school to post-secondary, whether that be college or career, you know, into the workforce. So the governor has put five hundred million into this Innovative School Model Grant Initiative. So the middle schools are getting five hundred thousand each. At Sullivan East, what we plan to do there is expand the CT Career Exploration Program and the CT STEM Program. So there's a outside learning deck at Sullivan East, and right now it's basically a bird sanctuary, and it's been very hard and challenging to keep And it's been very hard and challenging to keep clean. So we talked with Ms. Repulowski and the principal of the school and the plans are to enclose that outside learning area and expand both the CTE STEM and pre-expiration programs into that area. So working with Ms. West on, you know, getting a architect plan drawn up to expand those. It's pretty much going to take the entire amount of the money, but we, we do have, you know, some of the robotics equipment that we expanded with the middle school grant that we got a couple of months ago. Thank you to the State Department. So, and then Ms. Repulowski has said that we have some furniture, tables and things out there that we can put in there. So we think we can fully equip that class and expand that program to all sixth, seventh and eighth grade. So basically, the impact will be to all middle school students at Sullivan East. And the plan is to, to grow that program further into the high school. At Sullivan Central and Sullivan Heights, we plan to take some space in the old pre-technical education classrooms and just do some remodeling, renovation, spruce those up and make them more innovative looking. We plan to do a pre-expiration program at both middle schools. We will be purchasing hands-on simulator-type, virtual reality-type equipment, project-based learning curriculum that mimics so that the student will get a taste of what will be offered at the high school. So for instance, we'll have, we haven't decided how many weeks as far as the rotation will be, six, nine weeks or whatever. But, you know, we'll have students rotate through those programs such as welding, machine tool, digital arts design, aviation, and just get a little taste or sampling of what they will see at the high school so that they will have an idea of what they want to take once they get to high school to make those high school four years a little bit more meaningful. So in other words, get a jump start in middle school. By the time they go to high school, you know, take the level one welding, level two welding, level three, and then start into their work-based learning experiences, get their industry certifications, their dual enrollment, dual credit, and hopefully be, you know, a ready graduate and be ready to go to, whether it be college or the workforce. So that's kind of what we plan to do at both, those middle schools. Debbie, will that, will that entail needing more staff to do that or have you gotten that for you? Uh, we're still working on that. Just trying to be creative. And we're trying to keep those courses as CTE, C code courses so that we in turn get the TISA funding for those. So.
As far as the middle school goes, what we found is at Central and Sullivan Heights, we did have the space to do some innovative things. We needed more space at East Middle. You all are well aware that the robotics program, the STEM program at East Middle has just exploded. And to be able to move her into a larger space where we could do more and have more activity, if you've visited her classroom, you know that that, that stage takes the entirety of the room. So that will be a real plus. It will also make that learning porch a more usable space than it currently is. It won't be completely closed off as far as being able to see outside. There'll be a lot of glass, but Danine, when that building was constructed, we talked about that, if there was ever a time when we would come back. So we knew we had the infrastructure in place to enclose that if we ever wanted to. So I think it's going to be a real plus. And then by moving her, we have that accordion door in between those two classrooms where she currently occupies one and can...
Mr. Timms.
Mr. Timms occupies the other one. We'll be able to open that up and actually expand that space, you know, and, and both of them have a lot more space to do some really innovative and creative things there. Brent, you want to talk about our two high school projects?
Sure, we'd like to. So I'll start with Sullivan East High School. One of the things, I want to back up just a tad. I'll tell you something. Debbie mentioned a beautiful job of writing these, writing everything that needs to be written and submitted for the ISM grant. There's, there's a real writing talent that goes along with writing something specific enough to get the blessing of the state, but still raw enough to be able to have the latitude to make adjustments and decisions as you need to as these building projects move forward. So where we may not have every detail, it's written just so we can make those adjustments. And so, so great job, Ms. Matt. Sullivan East High School, we're looking at putting a showcase classroom at, at East High School. If you, if you've been to Westridge, I know all of you have, and seen the showcase classrooms that have the glass walls, that's something that's similar. And that's the vision that we have for a space at East High School. When you enter the building at the front doors, we believe that space to the right where the lockers have been, that that would be where we would place that showcase classroom. That classroom would feature a STEM and science lab. And so, again, if you can imagine what Danny R. Wood, what his class does at Westridge, you take that, put it east without the, without necessarily having all the T-shirts and the paraphernalia being built and made and printed and that kind of thing. This class, as it sits now, as we imagine it, with the teacher that we have for this would be more focused on the Adobe Suite, graphics, arts in its purest form. That lends itself also very well to a lot of the credentialing that the state is looking for, for our students. And it would also help us with our, our funding as it pertains to, to TISA and what they're looking at from us to provide for them, that we will get funded for, for our schools. So, so those things all match up really, really well. And so we're excited about that classroom in reference to a question you asked a little bit earlier. We do have a teacher that is very excited to be in this class. His name's Mr. Hines. He's currently an art teacher at East High School. So we're looking at a transition for, for him into that program. Still a lot to be worked out to get that to move smoothly, but we feel like we've got that in hand. We feel like, feel really good about that program, that build and the student involvement will come very easily.
And what I would add to that is during that facility assessment that Danine did at the beginning, she actually came back with some plans, if you'll recall, when we thought that we might be utilizing monies at East High School. We changed our trajectory and went with these roofs and HVAC, but this was actually one of her original plans to be able to enter classrooms there. So, you know, we've got a little bit of a head start there. There'll be some lockers, some additional locker removal. There's already been quite a bit, but we'll finish removing those lockers and then be able to construct that in there. And so feel really good about that. With that money, not only will we be able to do that construction, but we'll also be able to purchase lots of equipment to go into this classroom to make this work. So, and now at Westridge?
Westridge, we're looking at adding on a little bit. It'll be a little bit more of a, a building project. We're looking at adding a residential and construction lab. The placement of that lab, we'll get architects help on that to be exact, is where that will land. But the exciting thing about that is we've recently taken trips to, to Pennsylvania and Cleveland, Tennessee to, to observe, to explore a little bit and, and look at some of the great things going on in career, technical education. It's really fantastic high schools. And we've, we've learned a lot about, about construction and what that has meant for the local economies in those two, two different locations. And looking at what we have and what our communities of, of business are looking for from us, we feel like this is another good move to provide for, for our community and for our builders, a pipeline of students that, that are very proficient in construction. We would like to, I'm going to say, I'm looking across the table over, the boss man over there, we'd like to bring back masonry if possible. Of course, you know, you have the best, best masonry teachers in the whole state, Mr. Hubbard, for many, many years. And so we'll be talking to you, Mr. Hubbard, about what that looks like and growing a, a new masonry program if possible in the, in the near future. But through the construction of Westridge, we've heard many, many times from companies like JA Street about their need for construction workers. And we simply, you know, we don't have them here the way they need them. One of the masonry projects at Westridge, we were made aware that JA Street had to hire folks from North Carolina and bring people down just to, just to build Westridge. And that's a shame that we have to bring people, the cost for that, for JA Street to do that as well, probably for them was entirely unreasonable. And so we feel like we have a good opportunity to, to build something here that would be great for our students, great for our community. It's obviously a need. We feel like we can staff it very well and it's just a real good fit.
We get one million dollars per high school.
So will this replace any of the programs that's, that's the NIH name?
It would relocate a program.
It would relocate at least one, we believe.
Mm-hmm. And, you know, it's still building that component there at Westridge. And again, you know, we've got, we've included Danine and have some ideas there and she felt like we could do that. So I think that's something to look forward to there. I would ask Mr. Carter if he, coming from where he has come from and being a part in here, you know, seeing what we've had submitted and talking through these, if you had anything you wanted to add about that as well.
I'll just say, just tying the two projects together, I think the whole goal of the ISM was to be a seed for TISA, to sustain programs such as this. So this is exactly what the pipeline that we're talking about through the workforce starts with getting kids interested and getting them understanding it earlier in middle school so they make those good decisions before they go to high school, intentional decisions. And I think the Sullivan plan is, is right on line with that. So it's, it's a great opportunity.
All right. Any questions about the ISM grant? What I'm asking, what I will be recommending to the board tonight is that you approve our grants and our projects. All right. The next thing out of 7D is GP budget amendment and a resolution. We're getting to that time of the year where we have a budget cleanup and Ingrid has quite a bit, so she's going to go over that with you right now.
So the GPS budget amendment is just that. It's just a cleanup amendment to get all of our line items shorted before the end of the year. This is all the line items that we could do within the major categories and it didn't require a resolution to the county commission. So you can see that there is thirteen, you have thirteen items there and that's just transferring money from one line item to the other within their major category. It may be something like we needed money in disposal fees and we had extra in parts so we can move that. It doesn't change our budget at all. It just moves it from one line item to the other. So their total amount stays the same. This is the same amendment we do every year, just to clean it up. We're just a little bit ahead of the game on this because we're a little bit behind on budgets, so I could spend more time on this than I could on... So there you have it. Hopefully that'll, it's pretty clean, cut and dry and nothing out of the ordinary on that one. Now, the end of the year resolution that you have, that has to go before the county commission and that's moving across major categories. Again, it's not anything increasing the budget, it's just moving from one category to the next. So if a budget should cross two categories and you have to do that, it still might be within that same budget, but it's moving across categories, so we have to do that. And this is just cleanup. It's nothing really out of the ordinary. I will say we are having to move money to cover a large insurance increase for liability insurances. And then, you know, we have to move money for legal services as well. So those are some things that really couldn't be predicted, but it costs doing business, so we're having to move money to cover those. We were able to move all that without touching bank balance, so that's a good.
And those were, those were two major, that's basically what's driving this resolution. Increase in building contents insurance, we were given that in December.
Yes, that's right.
You know, that's a little, that's difficult to plan for. And then legal services, we continue to have some, some things there that you are well aware of that will continue to be there until they're resolved. With that being said, Chairman Jones, that concludes the board agenda for this evening. I would yield to you at this time.
Something I have is our next meeting, May fourth. It's Thursday, very good, that's Star Wars Day. Room session, four thirty and... Six thirty? That's it.
Does anyone else have anything before we adjourn?
I will not be able to be there on that one. Well, I said I'm not sure you're in Oxford, so that's, that's fine. We can have it that day sometime, but I won't be able to be there. May the fourth, I cannot be there.
We may have to have a call meeting before the end of the budget. We may have to have a call meeting after the end of the budget.
I think you were probably looking at after then. We did get some numbers today, but we don't think they're correct.
She just received them.
Oh, she did? Okay. Did it include what we thought was a, okay, so there was an error? Okay.
Did we have to see them in print yet?
That was what we just got and there was an error in it. And evidently you've just gotten it and I'm not checking mine.
I mean, just get caught off the cuff.
Okay. All right. So things are, things are just coming very slow, you know?
We're going to leave them before, maybe if something comes up, we'll get as early as we can.
The only other thing I would add is... Is for the remainder of this week, the county commission work session is Thursday night and the financial management committee meeting is Friday morning. With that being said, we've got some refreshments in the kitchen. If you all want to make your way to the kitchen, we have some, some food in there. And then we'll reconvene at six thirty downstairs.